...in the local charge of Harold Lewis, Nutley Journal, available to Nutley County Court, advertising Nutley Southern Star Ledger, most known as District Web. This is an official meeting. Black's a little place. Congratulations. Mr. Bellisama?
Here.
Mr. Carnesella?
Here.
Mrs. Stancheck Martin?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scolero?
Here.
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Here. I need approval of the amendments for the special meeting. Open the public meeting in executive session, please.
Thanks so much, Mr. President. Second.
Second, thank you. Correspondents? I'm sorry, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Correspondents?
We have our first presentation. Is this it?
No. Um, I do have it.
Somebody has. Thank you. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition for perfect attendance. We have two students that we're going to be recognizing tonight, Lucia Rizzuto and Connor Fitzpatrick. We're gonna go this way, but congratulations, and to you, that's a huge honor. Juan Opa, did you want to come and be another photo op? Congratulations, and for you, don't go anywhere. Mom's ready.
Congratulations. Good job. Very good.
Thank you. Come on. Turn your certificate around.
Never missed a day.
You're all good? All right, just by.
Hold on.
Yes?
All good.
Good, that's important. Congratulations.
So, I'd just like to state that this, actually, it didn't, wasn't occurring, but to my attention, one of them is Kazinsky, the whole board discussed it at their committees, that this is something should be done. Congratulations on the two students tonight. Well, we need to be recognized, and students are in a district that actually reached that goal and obtained it, and I think it's really great, so I think the board's gonna be following this up and make sure it continues in the future. So, thank you to the parents, thank you to the students today, and congratulations.
Congratulations again. That's quite a goal you've reached, and since I know you want to maintain it, even though we're on our summer break, you don't have to stay for our entire evening. If you'd like to break out now, it's just as well. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Close?
Sorry, it's your time. So, yeah, not as exciting, I'm only gonna go.
So, I think I'm gonna ask you, I'm the anti-bullying coordinator for another school district. This evening, presentation this evening is in regards to the school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. So, once a year, at the inclusion of the school year, each school safety team, which is in each school in our district, gets together and they provide an assessment of their HIV prevention efforts that comply with policy procedures and programming. Oh, yeah, thank you. The...
So, Kazinsky, you saying...
I have to worry about... So, the self-assessment is, it's a 40-page rubric, which consists of eight core elements. There's a rating scale, as you can see, which each school safety team needs to rate their efforts in each core element. In each element, there are indicators that they have to rate themselves. In addition to that, in rating themselves, they also have to take into consideration documentation. They have to have documentation, sufficient documentation, to substantiate their ratings. Here's a breakdown of the core elements. Core element one, which focuses on HIV programs, approaches initiatives, establishing, implementing, assessing our program, our prevention, our prevention efforts. What are we doing to prevent it, as well as to address it? What are, what are the functions of the school safety team, identifying and reviewing the school climate? Once, when the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights was initially passed, this day was really focused on following the procedure and the investigations. However, since then, it's really focused on now, what are we doing to create a safe school climate? Core element number two focuses primarily on training employees, on protective characteristics, what are we doing to discuss with our students HIV. Core element number three focuses on other staff training, which part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is not only training your staff on HIV prevention, but also suicide prevention. Core element number four, are we providing age-appropriate instruction according to the court curriculum content standards? Are we observing weaker respect as well, which is the first week in, the first, I'm sorry, the first Monday in October? Yeah, thank you. Core element number five, do we have anti-bullying specialists that's appointed by the principals? Are we meeting on the, a minimum, twice a year, the, the school safety team meeting? The school safety team, are they meeting twice a year? Are the anti-bullying specialists meeting with me at least a minimum of twice a year? Core element number six, school level HIP procedure? Are we following the procedures that our, that our district has, as well as what's required as, as the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights? Once again, procedure, are we notifying parents, are we completing investigation within two days? Are we preparing a report that is then given to Dr. Blazer, who then presents it to the board at the next, at the following board meeting? Core element, core element number eight, are we ensuring that our staff are reporting verbally, then within a minimum of, within two days, having a written report that is, that is completed and forwarded to the principal? Grades, which is why we have the, tonight, our official grades, which are then issued by the Department of Education, are they being posted? Once they are, once they are provided to us, to the school district, we have to post them within ten school days, which usually, I think the last few years, usually the last week in December, we receive them from the state. Okay? So, as you can see in the top, we have all the core elements, which are maximum of, below that, you can see the number of points you can receive in each core element. To the left, you have the breakdown of each school. One of the things that always, you know, I would try to find out what areas that we need to look at, as you can see under core element, core element number one, Walker Middle School, we have an 11 there. One of the things that we're focusing on, speaking this evening, speaking to anti-bullying specialists, and Mrs. Janice, a lot of our anti-bullying efforts, character education efforts, are implemented through advisory lessons throughout the, throughout the school year. One of the things that we're looking at in the next year is to conduct surveys for students to give us some feedback about the lessons that are conducted during our advisory lessons, to collect that data. Any questions?
Just on Walker Middle School, because you picked the three points, but if you look at the end, where it's really well below, I think, for a number of schools, is there like an action plan that we look at, bring them up more to the standard than all of the other schools?
Yeah.
I think we picked the three points, the first one, so we're still far below where everybody else is.
Yes, so one of the things that we're working on is improving in our school safety team. One of the things that we look at is, it's not that we're even, we're not doing it, is that, are we documenting? Because as I said earlier, we provide us sufficient documentation. Because one thing that we talk about is, well, we do this, but we don't have this documentation for it. So, one of the things that we talked about, part of the school safety meetings, and our agenda, is to highlight the areas that what we're talking about in our school safety meetings, because the state is very specific. If you don't have this documentation, really shouldn't be rating this office. So, we're trying to be really on the ball, and making sure that if you're gonna do something, it's do it the right way, and make sure that next time we have sufficient data, sufficient documentation.
So, my last part to follow up, I apologize, but if we go back to the HIP numbers, I thought what this school's also, one of, had more hips than some of the others, also on top of that, with their numbers now?
I think our numbers from last, from 14, 15?
Yeah.
Have reduced.
Okay.
I don't have those numbers for us this evening, and that's what we presented on November, so we don't have that, Mr. Scoler. But I think with both the board, our numbers have a number of HIP investigations, as well as a number of confirmed hips.
It's the confirmed investigations, can actually, they come from...
Correct.
So, during the academic committee, we did have presentations from Mr. Sullivan, and see it repeated at the September board meeting, and he actually went through in some detail how implementing the middle school model, and implementing some of the components of the plan, has reduced year over year, the number of disciplinary actions. I just wanna remind you that this isn't, the grade comes from the state, but we self-assess ourselves. So, it's our, it's our candor in our process.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm talking about past year's grades, what is that about?
Yeah, and I think I should probably point out to Dr. Blazer, is that it's not just the HIP, but it's just discipline as a whole, I think, has, has included, as well as the discipline efforts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Um, a couple more. Regarding policy and procedure, one thing that we do at the inclusion of school year, is we're doing and reassessing, like you said, Mr. Scoler, what are we doing? What are we, to improve our prevention intervention efforts? And I think Dr. Blazer and I have already exchanged emails, she brought up about Hipster, which is a, it's a, it's a software which manages information regarding the whole procedure regarding HIP, so we're gonna be looking for that. Another recommendation is what we're talking about with Walker Middle School, collecting data. One of the things I'm looking at too, is with our school safety team, maybe conducting another training, a school-wide, district-wide, me, training for all our school safety community members. So, that's one thing that we're looking forward to. Yeah, two more. So, once, obviously, we're a vet approval, Dr. Blazer submits the final rating that we submit to the state electronically. There's also a statement of assurances that is approved this evening, which provides this evening, today's approval date. Yeah? And, once again, as I said, once you receive those grades, we'll post them on the district website within ten, within ten days, I'm sorry.
And we'll have a follow-up presentation of that.
Yep, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellisama.
This will be the conference report, Dr. Blazer.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me say thank you to the board, and everyone in the office, and to the community for making me feel so welcome over the past few weeks, and for working so hard to bring me up to speed, of your patience, and your support is much appreciated. It's been a very busy few weeks for me, and actually, all around the district. So, I would like to highlight a few of the things that have been going on. I was able to attend the wonderful outdoor classroom kickoff, which is a partnership between the Nutley Education Foundation, the Passaic Valley Sewer Authority, and the Essex County Commissioners. The event was lovely, and I have to say, I'm really looking forward to seeing the students working in the space. Think that it's going to be an exceptional opportunity for the entire district. Additionally, in athletics, Mr. Pyro has received another honor. The Star Ledger in NewJersey.com has named him the fourth most influential person in the high school sports in the state of New Jersey. Not sure who the three are or blah blah, but we're proud of them. Our athletic practices begin on August 12th for football, August 15th for all of our other sports. So, hopefully, the heat wave will lift in time for everybody to get back out on the field. We did have a new program that started today. Students enrolled in AP History, AP Statistics, AP Physics, Physics 1, right? Yes, AP Physics 1, and AP Physics 2. Actually, have an exciting new opportunity this summer to prepare for their courses in the fall. It's a boot camp, and it's our own teachers that are holding this over at Nutley High School. So, I'm excited to hear how, how we do this week. We also have a number of ongoing programs. One is our extended school year program, that runs for 20 days through July 27th. We have approximately 100 students enrolled in the program this summer, and the purpose of the program is to prevent students from regressing, from having that summer slide that you might hear about, providing our classified students in the district with a continuum of academic services. They also continue to receive their related services, if it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, or speech, based on their eligibility for those services. In order to qualify for the extended school year program, our case managers collect the student data throughout the year, and the students are assessed to see how they might recruit skills, any skills that are lost over the summer. We do have an ESY showcase that everybody is invited to attend. It is July 27th at 10:30 at Lincoln School. I have to say, the students have worked diligently all during the month, learning about the different professions in the community. Not only did they have visits from the police and fire and emergency medical technicians, and the public works office, but today, Mr. Ferraro, who is in the public works department, also one of our board of ed members, came and discussed the importance of recycling, importance of recycling with the students. They actually spent some time separating the paper and plastic items, and had, looked like a lot of fun, coming up to the front of the auditorium, naming and putting the items in all of the correct bins. It's that kind of life skill opportunities that really help the students generalize what they're learning, and carry those skills over into the next school year. In the middle school, we have our summer strategies for language arts and math students. That's for our students entering grades one through eight. That program also is extending until July 27th. This is a program that students were invited to attend to improve their reading, writing, and/or math skills. We, I understand, have put specific attention on improving problem-solving and computational skills in math, and working to strengthen decoding and comprehension skills in reading. There has been a lot of attention placed on improving the overall writing skill of students, and they're using our reading and writing workshop model to focus on many lessons to actually improve individual student needs. We had 92 students from each of our five elementary schools participating, as well as students in grades six through eight. And last week, we wrapped up the summer Let's Learn Academic Enrichment Program with performances in the high school auditorium, and the students shared their work with their families and me, it was pretty wonderful. 184 elementary students participated in those programs, and there were actually 20 different classes offered to students in grade K to six. I understand the most popular primary classes for students in first and third grade were science, engineering, and drama, pretty exciting, and from fourth grade through sixth grade, computer science, engineering, and cooking. I have to say, I was really impressed with what I saw with the organization of the program, and at this time, since I see you're sitting in the audience, I would like to introduce Chris Osadre, who facilitates the program for some closing comments. Thanks, Chris. So, here I am again. It was another great summer, and it couldn't be without all your support. And then, without the parents signing their students out, without my staff that I have, and of course, the volunteers. 24 young adults that came, and anything I asked of them, they did. They're high school students, and they were very age-related. They opened the doors in the morning, said, "Morning," to everybody, and greeted everyone as they came in, and watched as they left. I, I had one parent that said, "Do you remember when I came through the program?" I feel more old. And I looked at her face, and I said, "Yes, you do." She was bringing her daughter. And it's like, wow, it's been a long time. It's a great program, and it looked right without your support, and the academic booster club, of course, is always our parent. So, thank you. Thank you. We have a lot of exciting things going on this summer, not just the, as Dr. Blazer mentioned, but multiple projects. If you have driven around Spring Garden School, and Washington School particularly, you've seen a lot of activity going on, starting with the Safe Roots to School grant at Washington. There's brand-new sidewalks going all the way on, along Walnut Street, all the way from Washington Avenue down to Park Avenue. The old fence has come down, a lot of the old bushes and shrubbery have come out. We're gonna be approving a contract tonight to put up new fencing along the barrier there between the sidewalk and where the school property starts, as well as paving of the parking lot, and we're also extending the parking area along the railroad tracks. Unbeknownst to most people, from the end of the parking area along the railroad tracks going down to where the residents, residential houses start, there was, there was actually a sidewalk there. And this morning, I stopped by, and there was our grounds crew out there, cleaning away and cutting down limbs, and getting rid of weeds and grass, and pretty soon, we will have sidewalks. If they didn't finish by the end of today, they will in another day. Temporary classroom units are currently being manufactured, and today, work started on laying out the footings at Washington School. The board is also approving tonight a retaining wall to go along Walnut Street, which will be between the sidewalk and where the temporary classroom units will be placed. So, we have a lot going on there at Washington. At the high school, the main office relocation has been completed. The transformation of the previous main office to the conference room is well underway, and the new security entrance will actually arrive on August 15th. We also have a locker rehab project going on in the high school, so they are repainting and fixing all of the lockers. We are continuing our security upgrades. This evening, another resolution on the agenda is to replace all of the classrooms' door locks throughout the high school. At Spring Garden School, the new entrance and the main office project is moving ahead on schedule. Footings to the entrance stairs have been started, as well as the blocking out of the main office, the child's study team, and the principal's office. All of these projects are mostly funded with capital and maintenance reserve, which the board has been approving every year, making deposits into these accounts, so that the funds are there to move the district ahead, not only academically, but also to make sure that our buildings are structurally sound, and everything's being upgraded that needs to be done. And some of the projects are also being funded with the remaining $2,000 referendum funds. On the financial side, the auditors were in district last week to conduct some of their preliminary work, and the business office staff is busy closing out last year's purchases, tracking new purchases, and preparing reports for the final audit. The buildings and grounds department is conducting all of their yearly cleaning in their buildings, and we're trying to work around a myriad of programs that we, that were conducted throughout the district during the month of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janice. This time, we'll have committee reports. Ms. Sherman?
The academic committee met on July 19th. At our meeting, Mr. Sullivan provided a presentation on how the middle school model improved communications as curbed disciplinary issues, and is promoting student learning at the middle school. The data which compares the last two years of the effects of the middle school model provides evidence that this change is in fact making a difference. As Superintendent Blazer has already informed us, he will be presenting some information at a future board meeting. Dr. Reilly reported on the revisions that have been made to define arts curriculum over the past four years. He also discussed how we, how he's worked on aligning the curriculum K through 12, with sequential standards-based skill instruction that fosters interdisciplinary and 21st century learning methods. Dr. Blazer discussed several possibilities for job descriptions of staff to replace Dr. Villan. The committee also reviewed the purchase of K through five science materials. We discussed district field trips, professional learning, and travel reimbursement expenses, which are on the agenda tonight, and that was basically the sum and substance of our hearing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scoler?
Thank you, Mrs. Kazinsky. The administrative committee met on July 19th. My attendants were myself, Ms. Russo, Mr. Carnesella, and Mr. Kazinsky was our guest for the evening. Dr. Blazer reported that the Montefiore Ross Heinberg has been continuing his work in the district, he's completed surveying the building principles, has now received building plans, is preparing to walk the building with principals to identify any available unused space. We hope to have the present, first report in August, no later than September. Dr. Blazer also noted Heinberg's variance requests. This is students from districts different, going to different schools. While it's been the practice of the district to honor as many requests as possible in the role of limitations, with the overcrowding of Washington School, yes, while it is becoming a challenge, Dr. Blazer will refer report of the number of students not attending their home schools in current enrollment at the next committee, so we can review that. Dr. Blazer also reported that several errors were found on the 2016, 2017 district calendar. Approval of the revisions is currently on the agenda this evening. Of note, Martin Luther King will be celebrated on Monday, January 16th. Schools will be closed for students and staff. If no snow days are used, the last day of school will be June 16, 2017, for students, and June 19th for staff. The end of year half-days will be noted on the calendar in response to parents' requests. High school graduation will be June 22nd, 2017. Dr. Blazer, she spoke a lot that night. Dr. Blazer discussed several possibilities for job descriptions to replace Dr. Villan, and for additional administrative positions in the 2016-17 budget. As Dr. Blazer starts her third full week in the district, she's actively engaged in her entry plan, which we've also started reviewing, and she welcomes any community member or organization to schedule an appointment to participate in this process. The committee also discussed property acquisition, and requests for use of facilities, personnel, and legal items on the agenda. The board's gonna be scheduling a retreat in the near future, that's our annual work session over the summer, and the next meeting, the administrative committee, will be August 22nd, 23rd, 2016. Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Scoler. Mr. Pointe?
Mr. President, we met on July 19th. Mr. Nicolet and Mr. Brown provided the committee with an update on projects, the summer work. Mrs. Janice provided everything that was discussed in her report. Mrs. Janice provided an update on the 15-16 budget closeout for the beginning audit. Mr. Marmarel provided extraordinary bonus addition we're receiving for the 16, 2016 school year. Finance resolutions were reviewed, as well as we discussed property acquisition, requests for facilities and personnel items, and bus lot in the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Periodical citizens, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak are on top of the camera and heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with this conclusion before you take your microphone. First person wishing to speak, now is the time. Thank you very much. Ms. Sherman, will you take the academic resolution, please?
President of academic resolutions, 1 through 5.
Discussion? Local call?
Mr. Bellisama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Stancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, I'm all but number four, I vote no on.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Scoler, will you take administrative resolutions, 1 through 4, please?
Sheriff, thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. I move administrative resolutions, 1 through 4.
Second.
Discussion? Local call?
Mr. Bellisama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Stancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. As Dr. Glazer starts her third full week in the district, she's actively engaged in her entry plan, which we've also started reviewing, and she welcomes any community member or organization to schedule an appointment to participate in this process. The committee also discussed property acquisition, and requests for use of facilities, personnel, and legal items on the agenda. The board's going to be scheduling a retreat in the near future. That's our annual work session over the summer. And the next meeting, the administrative committee, will be August twenty-second, twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. Thank you, Mrs. Kazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Schlerer. Good morning. Mr. President, maybe met on July nineteenth. Mr. Nicolet and Mr. Brown provided the committee with an update on projects, the summer work. Mrs. Yanez provided everything that was discussed in her report. Mrs. Yanez provided an update on the fifteen, sixteen budget closeout for the beginning audit. Mr. Marmarel provided an extraordinary bonus addition for receiving for the two thousand sixteen school year. Finance resolutions were reviewed, as well as we discussed property acquisition, requests for new facilities and personnel items, and bus lot. The next meeting will begin on July twenty-third.
Thank you very much. Imperial citizens, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number Six Oh One allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on top of Kevin and Herb. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with this conclusion before you take your microphone. First person wishing to speak, now is the time. Thank you very much. Ms. Sherman, will you take the academic resolutions, please?
President of academic resolutions, one through five.
Discussion? Local?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, I'm all but number four. I vote no.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Schlerer, will you take administrative resolutions, one through four, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Kazinski. I move administrative resolutions, one through four.
Second.
Discussion? Local?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Carnesella? I'm sorry. Resolutions, one through thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move finance resolutions, one through thirty-three, as read.
Discussion? Local?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Schlerer, will you take personnel resolutions, one through two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to have personnel resolutions, one and two, as listed. I shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Local, please?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Balsama, will you take the testimony, please?
Sure. I move personnel item three, whereas Mrs. Anne Marie Corallo has tendered to resignation as elementary school principal, and has identified her intention as a higher independent active service, and whereas Mrs. Corallo has worked in other public schools for a period of eighteen years, and whereas through the years, Mrs. Corallo has exemplified the finest qualities of an elementary principal at all times, now therefore, be resolved with Board of Education, expresses to Mrs. Corallo its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service, and extends her best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be a further resolved that this resolution be made in the court of minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
Local?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. First person may step forward and ask what would like to address this.
I'm going to be quiet tonight. Carter, we are.
Terry Quirk, forty-five hands in place.
The mic's not working. We need to turn it back on, because the...
All right.
No, it's not working, just...
It's not your fault. It's just not working at all.
Okay. I'm here, just like you.
There you go.
Here I go. Okay. Everybody can hear me. All right. Terry Quirk, forty-five hands in place. Spokesperson for the National Crime Act See Network. On behalf of N-PAN, we would like to welcome you to our district, and we're very happy to see you. And if you could just let me bend my organization, how do we go about meeting with you? Is it together with other groups, or...
You can meet with me individually. You just need to call and schedule an appointment.
Okay. Great, great. Okay. I have one other question for you, Mr. President. I understand that there are some problems with Oprah requests, and there was an Oprah request that was denied about the concept drawings. I just wanted to get a little bit of history on that. How do we...what is the actual process once a person submits an Oprah request? Like, exactly what happens from the Board of Ed standpoint?
I can answer it, but it might be easier for Karen to explain. But that particular Oprah, the concepts that we're looking at, nothing has been finalized, so there's nothing to Oprah. What we were discussing in closed session were strictly concepts.
Okay. So, here's my question. Usually, does, once we submit an Oprah, does it go, it goes to you, the custodian of rec, public records, and then, does it go for an attorney review? Like, how does that work?
Whether it goes for an attorney not depends upon what the information is that is being asked. So, in that case, you did consult with our attorney, so that we gave the proper response to the individual who submitted the Oprah request. So, that Oprah request is technically closed because that individual received a response.
Okay. So, when shall we be hearing about the concept drawings?
We are still waiting for a report back from the demographer. When we receive the information from the demographer, we sit with them as a board, then we will be able to come forward on our numbers, and then maybe, hopefully, turn some of those concepts into reality.
Yeah. I had read something about, something that you had said, that you needed public input. Are you still meeting with the public in regards to those concepts?
We have said from the beginning, that certainly our goal is to, once we sit with our demographer, with the architects, and a board, and then meet with the Board of Commissioners, then we are going to be looking for input from the community on what we have to do to expand our educational system in Nutley, and what's the best way to go about that with our buildings.
Okay. Does that be a public meeting?
Of course. Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board tonight?
Penny, the mic's not working. You could just...
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm just... It's easy for everyone.
There you go.
Just put it in the not-working pile. Welcome. Welcome, Dr. Glazer. I'm elated, and I've talked to people all over the community, and everyone is elated to have you. And from speaking with you, I know that you are going to be transparent and open, and that is extremely welcome and appreciated. I have a question about an invoice, the key, the car of Rubino, architect, sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. What is that reference? What is that an invoice for, please?
Architectural services for probably several projects.
Several projects? Because I had a question, the last time, there was a large sum to the Rubaro group. And the Oprah that I have done, what's for invoices, for the concept drawings. You said that there's nothing to respond to the Oprah, that the Oprah is for the actual drawings, the concept drawings that have been paid for by the Nutley taxpayers. The actual invoice shows that sixty-seven copies were also paid for, and yet, the Oprah for the taxpayer to see what they paid for is being denied. And respectfully, President Kazinski, you also said in a previous meeting several months ago, that three or four public input meetings would be scheduled. And now, in the newspaper this week, you said, "We're asking for public input." Now, we keep having a conversation that there will be public input. However, there has been no public input. And from what I understand, the committee that is supposed to be representing the taxpayers and the parents of this district, really, there's one parent on that committee, as I understand it, and it's you, Mr. Klein, correct?
No.
Okay. Who were the other parents?
There...
Or is there a committee?
There is no committee that you're speaking about. And we are the representative of the taxpayers, along with yourself.
Okay.
We don't have anything beyond the concept drawings that we're looking at. There's been no formality yet to our report. We're waiting to hear from the demographer, like I said. When we do, then we're going to meet with the commissioners. Then, we are certainly willing and will be meeting with the public, because it's their buildings that we're going to be looking at. But we're just not there yet. It's not...we want to get there as bad as you and the taxpayers want us to. We're not there yet. As soon as we are there...
Well, it seems like there keeps being excuses, because when you met, well, let me get this, actually, sir. When you mentioned many months ago, actually, I think it was last year, that there would be public input, there was no talk of that. We're waiting for a demographer, and we just hired the demographer last month, as I understand. So, now, we seem to be continuously put off from having input into this process. We have some serious issues right now. One, we may or may not get the five point five million dollars promised from the state, okay, to offset the Roach issue. You may or may not know it, but our tax bills went out late this year, this quarter, because we did not receive yet the money. And of course, third quarter bills are up. People are concerned, both at the municipal level and at the board level, that we need a voice, okay, in how the tax dollar is spent, both at the municipal level and at the Board of Ed level, which, as you know, close to fifty percent of our tax dollars goes into the school district. My personal opinion has been, since I've been coming here and requesting to be included as a taxpayer with no children in the system, just a concerned taxpayer, concerned about my property values, and concerned for the fiscal responsibility as exercised by all of our elected officials, that the township overall, both at the municipal level and at this level, become a lot more transparent than it has historically been. So, I make the same plea to our elected Board of Commissioners that I am making here today to you as our elected Board of Ed, and congratulations, because those of you who are, terms are up, the news reported that you are uncontested. No one chose to run against you, so congratulations. However, the request wants the aim, is that when you speak that there will be public input, then schedule the public input, instead of repeatedly pushing it back, pushing it back with a new reason why, every time, there is nothing scheduled. So, I just respectfully ask you all to consider it. I wish you a great rest of the summer, and see you in school start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to approach the board? Any old business to come before this board, Ms. Sherman?
Yes. I...some of you may know, or have had a very special educator in our district, who recently passed away, Mr. Ball. Some of you may, that are, people that graduated from the school system, may remember having official, either health, or gym, or driver's ed, where he had an imaginary break on his side of the car. But I would like to just take a moment to read his obituary, because he was more than just an educator, he was a true humanitarian. John Jack, ninety-one, at Hasbrook Heights, died on July sixteenth. Jack was born the son of the late Anna and John Ball, Lawrence Township. December forty-two, Jack enlisted in the U.S. Navy, where he served on a seaplane, recalcitrant flights in the Pacific Theater. He earned a number of declarations, including the Good Conduct Medal, the Philippine Liberation Medal, and the Asian Pacific Medal with two stars. He was discharged as an aviation mechanic in the second class in nineteen forty-six. He received his bachelor's degree from Trenton State Teachers College in nineteen fifty, and later earned his master's degree through Seton Wall University. He taught physical education and driver education in the Nutley School District from nineteen fifty to nineteen ninety. After retiring, he volunteered as an AARP driving instructor for many years. I'm sure he still had a break. Jack was a longtime member of the Hasbrook Heights Volunteer Fire Company and was their captain. He was chief in the HHFD from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-five. In addition to his active service, he was a member of the New Jersey State Firemen's Association, the Hasbrook Heights Firemen's Relief Association, and the South Bergen Sheeps Association, where he earned a term as president. A loving and dedicated husband, father, grandfather, neighbor, friend. And then, Jack survived by helping his devoted wife, sixty-six years, three daughters, Christine Kendall, husband David, Catherine Strohson. And it goes on to list his family members, which I'll keep private. But I just, I wanted to take a moment to read that, because he truly was a remarkable man, and for those of us that had the pleasure to have him as a teacher and amazing educator.
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to have Jack as an instructor, and I was more fortunate enough to have him as, when I was a board member in my first life. And Jack and I worked together in numerous occasions, and then we also worked professionally as firefighters. So, he was a menomost men, to my opinion.
So, if I could, so I also had Mr. Ball. So, I had him for, of course, the driver's ed, behind the wheel, multiple things. But it was really great, because then he also taught like, not the phys ed class, more the health classes, my senior year. As most people know, as a volunteer while I was in high school, is that the fire whistles that blew off? And every time the whistle blow, we used to be able to park on New Street, the teachers were parked, and his classroom was there. The fire whistles would blow, I'd run out of the school, hop in the car, and go after the fire. And every time I'd be like, "Mr. Ball, go, where'd you go?" I'd go, "We went after the fire, because state law says that you could do that." My mother would write the note, and Mr. Ball would always find me when I got back to the school and go, "So, what'd you have, closed the fire?" And then, I was very proud when we journeyed to South Berly. Nothing's part of South Berly, and then I doubled him as the chief over there, firefighter. So, we were friends our whole life, great guy, gave back all the time, funny, and well-deserved guy, that served this community well.
You're right. Anyone else? Any new business to come before the board?
So, I think, 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 I think,